I heard an old, old story of Savior faith from glory. How He gave His life on Calvary to save our wretch like me. I heard about His drawing of the precious blood that's only. And I repented of my sins and longed for victory. Oh, victory in Jesus, my Savior forever. He sought me and loved me with His redeeming blood. Be the mirror I knew Him and all my love is due Him. He points me to victory beneath the cleansing cup. I heard about His healing of the squamous hour revealing. How He made the lame to walk again and twas the blind to see. And then I cried, dear Jesus, come and heal my broken spirit. And somehow Jesus came and brought to me the victory. Oh, victory in Jesus, my Savior forever. He sought me and loved me with His redeeming blood. Be the mirror I knew Him and all my love is due Him. He points me to victory beneath the cleansing cup. I heard about a mansion He has built for me in glory. And I heard about the streets of gold beyond the first sea. About the angels singing and the old redemption story. And some sweet day I'll sing up there the song of victory. Oh, victory in Jesus, my Savior forever. He sought me and loved me with His redeeming blood. Be the mirror I knew Him and all my love is due Him. He points me to victory beneath the cleansing cup.
Sorry, my brain and the ukulele strumming were not hitting the rhythm right. It was off and back and forth.
The near and the stand.
Sounds great.
All right, then we'll go newer. So number thirty-two. What'd you say?
City alike.
That's the wrong key. Go on. We'll find one more back.
What gift of grace is Jesus my redeemer? There is no Lord, nor heaven hath to give. He is my joy, my righteousness and freedom. My steadfast blood, my deep and boundless peace. To this I hold, my hope is only Jesus. For my life is holy down to His. Oh, how strange and divine I am seeing. All is right yet not I, but through Christ in me. The night is dark, but I have not forsaken. Over by my side the Savior knee will stay. I labor all in weakness and rejoicing. For in my knee is powerings to say. To this I hold, my shepherd will be given me. Through the deepest valley he will lead. Oh, the night has been long and I shall overcome yet not I, but through Christ in me. No faith I dread, I know I am forgiven. The future sure, the price it has been paid. For Jesus lived and suffered for my pardon. And He was raised to overthrow the grave. To this I hold, my sin has been defeated. Jesus now and ever is my plea. Oh, the chains are released, I can sing. I am free yet not I, but through Christ in me. With every breath I long to follow Jesus. For He has said, and He will bring me home. And day by day I know He will renew me. Until I stand with joy before the cross. To this I hold, my hope is only Jesus. Oh, the glory evermore to Him. When the race is complete, still my lips shall repeat. Yet not I, but through Christ in me. To this I hold, my hope is only Jesus. Oh, the glory evermore to Him. When the race is complete, still my lips shall repeat. Yet not I, but through Christ in me. When the race is complete, still my lips shall repeat. Yet not I, but through Christ in me. Yet not I, but through Christ in me. Yet not I, but through Christ in me.
Amen.
Nice job, Stephen.
Well, let's pray before the kids go. Father, we thank you so much for the privilege, the honor, the blessing to gather together, to study your word, to sing songs of praise to you. And Lord, we just praise you for that opportunity. We know that brothers and sisters around the world do not have the freedom to gather like we do. And so, Lord, we do not take it for granted, and we praise you for that opportunity. And Lord, we ask you tonight to open our hearts and minds to receive the truth that you would want us to receive. Pray that you'd be with, share it as she teaches the young folks, and be with me as I share through what you did through Paul and Iconium. And so, we do just pray for those around us, and we pray for those who don't have a relationship with you. Praying, Lord, that we would have the opportunity to share the glorious gospel with them in Jesus' name. Amen. All right, Acts chapter eleven. Eleven? It's chapter fourteen. Excuse me. Acts chapter fourteen. I've got it right here in front of me. I don't know why I said the wrong one. Sometimes that do happen. So we've been studying through the book of Acts. I've been highlighting three themes that you'll see through the book of Acts: Gospel expansion, persecution, and organization. And most recently, we've been focusing on the first missionary journey of Paul. Paul and Barnabas were called out by the Holy Spirit, sent by the church in Antioch. And so, they started their travels. They actually started with an assistant, John Mark, who deserted them after Cyprus, and he goes back to Jerusalem. That'll come up again later. During this trip, Paul and Barnabas have been preaching the gospel. They've seen confrontation. They've seen persecution. But they've also seen people getting saved. And so, last week, I left you with three questions: a question about success, a question about persecution, and a question about sharing the gospel. And so, hopefully, those gave you some things to think about this week as you went through your daily activities and maybe even read ahead here. So today, we're getting into verse one, chapter fourteen. So just to kind of give you the context, Paul and Barnabas had been in Antioch, Poseidon, and they had been expelled from that district. And so, it picks up in verse one. It says, "In Iconium they entered the Jewish synagogue as usual and spoke in such a way that a great number of both Jews and Greeks believed. But the unbelieving Jews stirred up the Gentiles and poisoned their minds against the brothers. So they stayed there a long time and spoke boldly for the Lord, who testified to the message of His grace by enabling them to do signs and wonders. But the people of the city were divided, some siding with the Jews and others with the apostles. When an attempt was made by both the Gentiles and the Jews with their rulers to mistreat and stone them, they found out about it and fled to the Liconian towns of Lystra and Derby and to the surrounding countryside. There they continued preaching the gospel." And so, we see that a theme is starting to develop with Paul, right? He goes into a town. He preaches the gospel, makes a bunch of people mad, and then he has to move on to another place. And so, he's starting to create this theme. And these seven verses are all that's given for his time in Iconium. And a lot of times, we'll read through this, and this is a common thing that I will keep hammering through the book of Acts, is you have to put the events on the timeline. And you have to understand, it only took us a few seconds to read verses one through seven, but that covered what could have been weeks or months. And so, to understand that, you need to take some time and go down through it. And so, as we look through it, we see five distinct activities that happened. So we're not given a timeline of exactly, but, and we're not given anything that can help us count the amount of time that it was there, but it does say that it was a long time. So just take that into consideration in verse three. But here's the five activities. I'm going to go over these kind of quickly. Number one, obviously, preaching the gospel. In verse one, it says that they entered the Jewish synagogue and as usual spoke in such a way that a great number of people believed. So they were there to preach the gospel. So pay attention. Paul's purpose, his agenda, his reason in life is to preach the gospel of Jesus Christ. That's what Paul is going to do. That is who he is. And so, when he enters a town, he looks for a place to meet people and share the gospel. In this particular context, it was a natural place to go. The synagogue was a natural place to go. He could, he had connections. It was a meeting place. People were going to gather there to talk about spiritual things. And so, it was a natural place. And this has been his MO. I love the way the Christian Standard Bible says it. It says, "He went to the, entered the Jewish synagogue as usual," and so, this is his practice. This is what he does. So he preaches the gospel. Number two, in verse two, you can see that there's opposition. The message of Jesus goes against the ways of the world in our thinking. If you preach the gospel, you will run cross-current to the world, period. You can't miss it. You can't change that. It rubs people. It irritates people. So opposition is expected, and it's also validation. If you are preaching a message that everybody likes, you need to check it again because the gospel steps on toes, and it rubs people, and it irritates people. So why does the gospel ruffle feathers? Well, remember that this concept of grace that we talked about last week removes all sense of power in prideful, works-based religions. So it strips the power out of those work-based religions by offering grace. So the gospel also requires us to admit and expose sin, which I don't know if you've felt it or not, but that's not fun, right? If you're doing something that you like to do, and the Bible calls it sin, that's not fun. You have to admit, "I'm wrong. I have gone against God." And so, we have to admit and expose and deal with sin, which a lot of people don't want to do. That's why there's this common trend to try and get rid of saying sin is sin. And so, then you've got to take into consideration there's an amount of power and money that the business of religion creates. And so, when you take all of those things, it's not a far jump to think about how offensive Paul's message would have been when he goes into town. That's going to be true even today. You're going to go in, and you're going to ruffle feathers. So opposition is going to happen. Verse three, we see that there was use of sign gifts. Now, there's no mention of signs and wonders back in Antioch, Poseidon. And there's only one mention on the island of Cyprus. So it hasn't been their main thing. But here, we're told that they performed many signs and wonders. In verse three, it says, "They spoke boldly for a long time, and the Lord testified to the message of His grace by enabling them to do signs and wonders." So notice the reason for it. This is one way, and get that clearly, this is one way that the Lord testified to His message, was through the signs and wonders. And so, they served to validate the message brought by the messengers. Luke doesn't record what they did. We can make educated guesses that it would have to do with healings and other things that we see common in other parts of Scripture. But it really doesn't matter because the emphasis here is not on the miracle, but on the fact that the miracles validated the message. So the message is the focus. And then in verse five, you see that opposition has leveled up to persecution. In verse five, it says, "They sought to mistreat and stone them. The unbelieving have transitioned from arguing and debating to plotting an execution." And so, Paul and Barnabas again faced common forms of persecution. They criticized the message. They slandered the messenger, and even to the level of physical violence. And then in verse six, you will see that they escape and they flee. So finally, Luke records their exit from the city. But this time, they're not leaving due to being exiled. They are trying to escape being stoned to death. And so, with those five events that you see down through that, what I hope to do is, a lot of people read through this so fast that they don't pick up on those different things. And so, I want to highlight some different things that happened there. When you slow down and describe the obvious, we tend to find treasures we weren't looking for. A lot of times, I'm super guilty of this because I'll just be honest with you and transparent and admit my flaws, but I've read the Bible back and forth lots of times. And there'll be times when I'm reading a devotion, or I'm reading a story in the Bible. I'm reading through it, and I'm like, "Okay, I knew this story. Let's skip ahead." That shouldn't do that. I do that, but we shouldn't do that. And I try to catch myself when I do because when you slow down and actually read the story, you'll find treasures that you weren't even looking for. And I want to share with you guys, I want to spend most of the time we got left, sharing with you a few things that I found as I went through this text and looked at those obvious things. Paul's preaching the gospel. He was, he found opposition. God performed signs and miracles through them, and then there was persecution, and then they had to leave town. Sounds simple, but as you look through that, there's some treasures, and I want to share the ones that I found with you. The first one I want to share with you, you can see it verses one through three, and that is, we can find that this battle is about, is more than just a debate. The battle is more than just a debate. In verse one through three, let me read it again. "In Iconium they entered the Jewish synagogue as usual and spoke in such a way that a great number of Jews and Greeks believed. But the unbelieving Jews stirred up the Gentiles and poisoned their minds against the brothers. So they stayed there a long time and spoke boldly for the Lord, who testified to the message of His grace by enabling them to do signs and wonders." So Paul and Barnabas, notice this, Paul and Barnabas preached and shared in a way that convinced many to believe. The way they presented their message persuaded people, right? And you can also see that the unbelieving Jews stirred up and poisoned the minds of the Gentiles against the brothers. And so, we see that there's this back and forth, a debate. But what I want you to see is that it's bigger than a debate. I want you to understand that it's not just an intellectual battle here. So the obvious question that you have to ask is whose minds were being poisoned? When he talks about this, okay? So back in verse one, Luke makes reference to Jews and Greeks who are believing. The word Greeks there is like Hellenistic or Helena. That's where we get that Hellenistic Jews from. And so, there are Gentiles who had a Hellenistic culture that had embraced Judaism. There were people who were looking to that. And so, that's one class. But in verse two, he references the Gentiles. And if you go back and consider the audience that he had at the synagogue, you can presume that there were other Gentiles in town, obviously. There are some that had embraced some forms of Judaism, as we talked about last week. But there's also these other Gentiles in town. And those Gentiles that attended synagogue would have been proselytites, or they would have been interested in such of those things. And so, these other Gentiles would not have been. And so, I just want to make that clear, that the unbelieving Jews are not de-converting the Greeks that had believed. It's not, I think a lot of times, we read through this, we think they're still in church when we get to these sections. You think they're still in synagogue, and this is where they're having that argument. This goes over some time. Verse three, "So they stayed there a long time," and so, because there was this battle that was going on. They're not de-converting those who had believed. They're riling up the Gentiles who weren't believing anyway, right? Now, this is going to come up a little bit later, but I want to make sure that we answered that question. That's whose minds? That's who the Jewish, the unbelieving Jews are riling up. The second major question here is, what is it that they're doing to rile these people up? What does it mean to stir up the Gentiles and to poison their minds? So depending on your translation, you may see some different wording here in the way that they have chosen to translate from the Greek. I found it interesting that in like the CSV, the ESV, the New King James, they all use something like, "They stirred up the Gentiles and poisoned their minds," right? The New American Standard uses this phrase, "Stirred up the minds of the Gentiles and embittered them." Okay? Notice where the shift of the object is in English. They shift it from the first action to the second, and the New American Standard switches it back. So I found that kind of interesting that they moved that "of the Gentiles," that prepositional phrase. They moved that around. Why? So when you dig in a little bit deeper, you'll find that the Greek sentence structure is actually shaped in a way that is most literally translated by the Legacy Standard Bible and the Old Geneva Bible like this: "Stirred up and embittered the minds of the Gentiles against the brothers." So they stirred up and embittered the minds of the Gentiles. So it's very clear that what's being stirred up, what's being agitated, what is being poisoned, what's being embittered, what's being soured is the minds of the Gentiles. The unbelieving Jews were successful in, the way the King James says, "causing their minds to think evil about the believers." So they're really destroying the reputation of the believers in the minds of these other people. So this is where I want you to see. This is not about a finely tuned argument to sway intellect. No, we're talking about something a little bit more crafty and frightening than that. The Greek word here that is most often translated, that's translated as mind, is most often translated as soul. But we're aware that words have a range of meaning. And so, your context here, all the translators agree that in this context, they're not referring to what we would understand if we read soul. You know, the inner being, the combination of heart, mind, conscience, being sentient, all that kind of stuff. But they all agree that this is more about their thinking, their attitude, their mindset, their ideas about this particular people group. So the point here is that it's not simply an intellectual argument. They are destroying the whole reputation. They're making everything about the Gentiles and those who are outside of this look bad and look negatively among the Christians. They want to see the Christians in a bad light. So the unbelieving Jews had agitated, they had riled up the Gentiles to have a negative and outright disdain for the believers. So it wasn't just, we're arguing theology here. It wasn't intellectual. It was a, "These people are evil. They're horrible. They want to do this. They want to do that." So with those two questions answered, we find here that Paul and Barnabas are in a battle with an unbelieving Jews for the good impressions on the unbelieving Gentiles. Let me say that again. What they're battling for is the good impressions that they make on the unbelieving Gentiles. Verse three is evidence that it's not simply an intellectual battle. What this involves is both emotion and showmanship as well as intellect. That's what the signs and wonders, God validates that message with signs and wonders because it creates emotion. It creates showmanship. It creates this spectacle. It's really kind of like what you see lawyers do in court. You ever seen a lawyer in court? They are not just trying to intellectually persuade the jury. They pull the hard strings. They tell a story. They make a show in order to grab all of that. And that's what public speaking is most of the time. It's not just transferring facts. It's actually like, it's grabbing things, and you're bringing people in. Quite honestly, there's just a lot of showmanship and emotional manipulation that happens in most of the things that we deal with. So what does that mean? Why does that matter that it's not just an intellectual debate, that it involves these other things? Well, first off, to use fancy terms, sharing the gospel includes both proper orthodoxy and orthoproxy. So that means right doctrine, believing the right things, and right practice. So you have to practice what you believe. They have to match. You can't be a hypocrite. And I'm sure, in some ways, shapes, and forms, these unbelieving Jews are using, where people stumble and fall, against them in the eyes of the Gentiles. They're going to say, "Well, look, they say this, but this is how they behave. They do this, and they do that." That's the first thing. But secondly, we should be finding the best ways to connect with those we're trying to reach. Without compromising the message, we should be able to speak the language, use the music, present it in a way that appeals to emotion and interest as well as intellect. We have the intellectual part of it, but at the same time, it's got to be presented in that way. So here's an example. I'm hammering this point because it is the example, okay? Look close. Next week, we're going to get to verse fourteen. Look at verse fourteen. "The apostles Barnabas and Paul tore their robes when they heard this and rushed into the crowd shouting, 'People, why are you doing these things?'" We are people also. We are people also, just like you, and we are proclaiming the good news to you.'" You know what that's in response to? Them worshiping them. See, Paul and Barnabas go into the next town, and they're doing all these signs and wonders, and they do a particular miracle that makes the people think that they're Zeus and Hermes, and they start to worship them as gods. They are even bringing animals out that they're going to sacrifice to their gods, who they think have come down here. And so Paul and Barnabas, verse 14 is meant to like shake you. It's meant to be a huge transition. Have you ever seen the movie The Sixth Sense? Well, I'll go ahead and, it's a movie where this little boy is seeing a psychiatrist or a therapist, and the whole time, they're having this discussion, but at the end of the movie, you find out he's dead the whole time. And it's crazy, it was one of the biggest plot twists in movies in the last 20 years, at least, maybe even more than that. I don't know when The Sixth Sense came out, but it was one of those shocking plot twists. Well, that's what this is right here. We're going to see the signs and wonders start to build up, and then all of a sudden, there's a jerk on the chain, and it's like, wait a minute, that's not the point. It's meant to be that. So the reason I'm hammering this is because it's meant to give you the whiplash that makes the point memorable. That's not an intellectual argument. That appeals to emotion, that appeals to showmanship. And so the point here is that we must anchor this showmanship, or it will get out of hand. That's the whole point of the next section, but that's for next week. And so the first thing, the first nugget that I drew out of here is understanding that this is more than just an intellectual debate. You want to see Paul intellectually debate, read Romans. He will wear you out. When you want to see Paul on display, where he has the crowds eating out of his hand, you read Acts, and you see how it's played. And so it was more than just an intellectual debate, and I think that's important for us to remember. The second thing is in verses 3 through 6, we see that there's a progression in the intensity of the level of persecution. After they were doing this, they saw that the city was divided, and in attempts made by both the Gentiles and the Jews with their rulers, they sought to mistreat and to stone Paul and Barnabas. So we also saw this back in Antioch Poseidon. It starts with debate, it starts with arguing, but then it moves. Remember what I said last week? When they're losing the argument, they'll start to attack you, and when you know, you know you've won an argument, when they start to attack you instead of your argument. So then they move to trying to attack and destroy the reputation and character of Paul, seeking to destroy influence among the people they haven't gotten to. So if Paul's walking through the street, he meets another Gentile, and he says, "Have you heard about the gospel of Jesus Christ?" The Gentile goes, "I've heard about you. You're that Paul guy they told me about." You know, they're trying to destroy his reputation. And then finally, it peaks at physical violence. Verse 5, we see the climax of the plot that they have against Paul and Barnabas, and that is that they intend to stone them to death. This is practically meant to be a death sentence. And I say practically meant, because I'll explain it more when we get down to verse 19, but there are people, I mean, they stone with the intention of leaving you for dead, but if you got up and walked away, they didn't come back to finish it. So it's practically a death sentence. And this is still the progression that we see today. Current levels of persecution differ by location and social context, but the progression is the same. Obviously, in some places in the world, Christian lives are constantly in danger. You know, we have fellow believers around the world that are being killed for the gospel of Jesus. I can't remember, or I'm not at liberty to say, the country, but you know, the expected lifespan of a Christian is less than one year after their conversion. That's difficult for us to comprehend on many levels. In America, we've mostly been in the debate level. You know, since the formation of the United States, there were some Baptists that were very adamant about having freedom of religion. Before the United States was formed, the colonies had different sets and different rules, and there were some colonies that said, "You have to be this, and if you weren't that," and they kind of pushed you out, or they wouldn't let you practice your faith. And so at the formation of the United States, there was a big push for the First Amendment, to have the freedom to practice whatever religion you want to practice. And so since that time, it's been mostly at this debate level, where we kind of debate back and forth. But I think over the last 50 to 60 years, we've seen a transition into character assassination. I think we've seen a general shift in the culture and in the general population to something that's no longer intellectual discourse, now it's name-calling, accusations, and social pressure. I don't know how many times, me personally, I've shared with somebody that I am a Christian, and I get something back, not usually this gruff, but in this way, "So you're a bigot." Right? You know, "I'm a Christian, I believe what the Bible says." "Oh, so you hate this type of person." No, I said, "I'm a Christian who believes the Bible," which means I love that person. But that's the kind of thing that we're starting to see, it's name-calling, it's accusations, it's this social pressure, that if you're a Christian, you're just some dumb hick that doesn't know how to think, who is just settled in your old ways, and you are hateful towards these different groups of people. So why do I say that? What does that mean? Why do I bring that up? Why is that a treasure that I feel like I was able to find in here? Well, let me say it plainly, because I value clarity. It is not our goal to end persecution. As Christians, we are never directed to seek the removal of persecution from us. The biblical record of persecution is not given to us to avoid and prevent persecution. They don't tell us the reasons that they're persecuted, because they're telling us, "Well, don't do this, or it'll get you persecuted." No. The reason that we're giving those things, the reason that God put them in His Word, is to remind us that persecution should be expected, embraced, and endured by Christians. That persecution is something that will happen. Now, it doesn't mean that we go out and seek it. I'm not saying there'll be some weirdo trying to get people to stone you. You know, I'm not signing up to try and find somebody to execute me for my faith. We shouldn't be asking for it, we shouldn't be doing things just to incite it. You ever, have you ever, so bullying is a big thing. I was a bully in school. I was bullied at one point, but then I became the bully. But here's the thing, kids that get bullied, I know there's probably some super psychological thing behind all of this, but they like to poke the bear sometimes. They like to try and instigate it, to get one up on the bully line. And a lot of times, that's the way Christians come across, that's the way Christians do it. So we know that we don't have to seek persecution, it's going to find us out, but why do we purposely go poke the bear? Why do we purposely try and do things with the intention of getting a reaction from other people? One of the biggest things that I have to do a lot of times is just keep my mouth shut, because I purposely want to say things in a very condescending or stinging way to get the reaction that I want. And it shouldn't be that way. So we're not to incite it, we're not to seek out this persecution. In fact, Romans 12:18 tells us, "If possible, as far as it depends on you, live at peace with everyone." So as a Christian, I shouldn't be trying to start the fight. When I was, when I was, from about, I think it was about nine or 10 till I was 15, I took martial arts, and there was a time period in there when I was like, man, really wished I could get in a fight to see how this stuff works. And so I'd look for those little ways to try and start fights with somebody, just to see if they'll come back, because my dad told me, "Hey, you're not supposed to start the fight, so I'm not going to swing first," but he told me I was allowed to end it. And so that's not the way Christians should be. That's not what, that's not what I'm trying to say here about bringing out this idea of persecution. And so don't get that. But what I am saying is that we should expect it, we should be prepared for it, we should embrace it to some extent, and it should be endured. So when we see what Paul did here, when he became aware of the plot, they decided to leave town. Now, as we continue to study Paul in the breadth of the book of Acts, there's going to be a variety of actions. Sometimes he doesn't leave. Sometimes he does. This particular time, he does. So back to the question I asked last week, what are your thoughts about persecution in light of Scripture? And this is, this is something that we're going to continue to build on, because it just gets worse for Paul as the book goes on, this level of persecution. So, you know, this was not just an intellectual debate, this wasn't, this was more than that. We also see that the level of persecution does the same, ramping up again. We see the same types of things, and I think it's healthy for us to recognize that pattern, not so that we can avoid it, not so that we can hopefully react and be able to show them what for, but so that we can understand and be ready to endure what's going to be happening. But then the third thing is to, look at verse 7. "There they continued preaching the gospel." Notice that again, we see Paul and Barnabas not deterred from preaching the gospel. "I don't know, this is the third time I've come into some trouble, maybe this isn't for me." No. I know a lot of people who have quit over much less. Tim and I have this conversation a lot, and there's an interesting book, a lady wrote a dissertation, and it grew into a book, but some people just have grit. That quality of character that refuses to give up, and it pushes through when 90% of the rest of the people will give up, and they just quit. We tend to view those people as overachievers. We think, oh, they're just talented, or they're lucky, but it's different than that. And I could spend hours talking about this. That book, Grit, is an excellent, excellent book. But what we're seeing here is the grit of Paul and Barnabas. They're not going to give up. They say, "Okay, we almost got stoned at that one, let's keep pushing." And they're going to keep preaching the gospel. We're going to see that nothing, absolutely nothing, will stop Paul. Now, it doesn't mean that he does it in his own power, you go back and read his letters, and he's very honest. He needs the prayers of everybody, that he will continue to endure, that he'll continue to speak boldly. We're going to see that there's times when Paul maybe doesn't want to, but he's compelled to. It's just, that's who he is, he can't not do it. And so I wanted to implant a few ideas as we get ready for next week in Listera, and I've exposed these ideas already in the book of Acts, but I want to just go plain, or plainly point them out, kind of just say, this is what we are, well, this is what we're dealing with, so that you can, you can go ahead and start thinking about that. And so the first thing is that this idea of dealing with frustration and discouragement. These two things are often based more on emotions than they are fact, but they're real. People get discouraged, people get frustrated. And so how do we deal with that? Paul and Barnabas' grit, both of them have to figure out how to deal with this discouragement and this frustration of, they've now been kicked out of the second town. The second point, or the second idea I kind of want to give you is, what does it mean to be called? This idea of calling is not exclusive to Christianity, but within Christianity, it does have some unique aspects. And so what does it mean to be called? And when somebody says, "I can't not do it, I have to." Which prophet is it that said, "It's like fire in my bones if I don't speak?" "I have to." So what does that, what does that mean? What does that mean when we say that? And then the third idea that I kind of want to implant in your head is counting the cost. My personal research suggests that most people that lack grit don't really grasp the idea of counting the cost. I've directed, asked a person one time, "Do you understand how much this is going to hurt? Can you deal with the pain?" And they said, "Well, yeah, I understand it, of course." But when they quit, I realized that they never really did understand pain. They hadn't been through pain yet, so when they felt pain, it was, "Oh, well, maybe not." Their idea of pain was inadequate. They didn't grasp the idea properly. And by the way, this was in reference to running a marathon. But in medicine, we do this thing, and if you've ever dealt with EMTs, they probably ask you this question, "On a scale of 1 to 10, 1 being the least, 10 being the worst pain you've ever felt in your life, where is your pain?" If you ladies gave birth naturally, your pain scale is going to be different than Jeremiah's, who's never even had a broken bone, right? So this, some people just don't understand the concept of counting the cost and what it might actually cost them. I'm going to tell the short story on Sharon, but when we were in the hospital, she was giving birth to Jeremiah, it started to get rough, and she said, "I changed my mind, I don't want to do this anymore." It's like, this isn't something you can quit, so, but she did well, I was really proud of her.
That's common.
It is.
That thought is very common.
Yeah. Never again.
I don't want to do this.
Yeah, it's like, and so a lot of times, people just really haven't considered what it will cost. Nobody knows what it will cost them to follow Jesus. Therefore, as Nick Ripken, you know, kind of says, "You have to be prepared to lose everything. Everything. Period." Now, that doesn't mean you will lose everything, but we must be prepared to. And in order to do that, like Nick says, you have to know that Jesus is worth it. And I'm going to tell you, testimony after testimony after testimony of those who have faced the worst persecution in the world will tell you, Jesus is worth it. However, some things that we can perceive and we can predict, will need to be sacrificed. So in this passage, there's, just looking at Paul's life, there's five things right off that you can see that he had to sacrifice to do what he did. And I won't go into detail, I just want to mention them. Popularity, Paul's not well-liked in most places at the end of his life. Comfort, where does Paul sleep? Borrowed beds most of the time, if that. He sacrifices consistency. He doesn't have a place. What does his day hold? He doesn't know. He may get up and lead a thousand people to the Lord, or he might die, you just don't know. Safety, there was multiple threats. He lists them in one of his books, but he is, he gets stoned, he gets shipwrecked, he just, you know, there's bandits on the road, there's all these things that are there, his safety is always at risk. And the fifth one is family. You know, there's a lot of debate on Paul's marriage situation, whether he was married and widowed, or never married, but we do know, based on 1 Corinthians 7, that he says, where he says, "I say to the unmarried and to the widows, it is good for them to remain as I am, single." And so if you read the context around that passage, you kind of understand that Paul has sacrificed a family life to do what he does. No wife, no kids are ever mentioned, and so he sacrifices that. And so when you think about your calling, or whatever the Lord may use you to do, you may perceive, you may be able to say, "These are some things I know I'm going to sacrifice." But there's no command, or there's no requirement that we must be, of what we must sacrifice individually, but we're discerning enough to count the cost in some ways. My calling has required many sacrifices. There's a lot of things that me and my family has sacrificed because of what God has called us to. Now, I'm not complaining about that, because when I look at other pastors in other places, I'm not wearing a suit every Sunday, I like my flip-flops and, you know, I don't want to have to, I like the freedom of my schedule, I don't want to have to be in board meetings every day, I like to do- I don't want to have to be in board meetings every day, I like to do hands-on ministry. But there's other sacrifices that we've had to make, so there's different sacrifices in different places, but when you consider what Paul's going through and you consider the different things, you would do well to honestly consider what you have to sacrifice, and here's why. The enemy will use those sacrifices as an inroad to bring discouragement and frustration, and in many instances, lead to the abandonment of a calling. Paul never gave up. And we will see this type of verse over and over and over again. "And there Paul preached the gospel." He was never deterred. So here's the questions that kind of align with those thoughts that I want implanted. What causes frustration and discouragement in your life? What kind of things get you down? They're different from each of us, for each of us, there's, we all struggle with different things. But what kind of things cause you frustration and discouragement? Number two, what creates a sentence of purpose and mission for you? If there was no chance of failure, meaning you were guaranteed success, what would you do with your life? Number three, have you taken the time to pause and consider giving your unrestricted yes to Jesus and what that might cost you? Has it occurred to you that there is no promise that you could keep those things anyway? I know some people that say, "I would serve Jesus, but it might cost me my kids." There's no promise you get to keep them anyway. "It might cost me my health." There's no promise you get to keep that anyway. Health, family, possessions, reputation, jobs, talents, comforts, whatever it is, there's no absolute way to protect what you have. Like my grandmama used to say, "Naked, you came into this world, naked you'll go out." But that's not the real question. The real question here is more about whether or not you could willingly give up some things. Are you willing to sacrifice on purpose? Are you willing to allow those things not to be there for the purpose of Christ? And so when you give your unrestricted yes and what it might cost you, is that something you are willing to willingly give up? Is that something you embrace willingly giving up? So we're going to come back around to that because in this next passage, this next town that they go to, something very, very dynamic and powerful happens. I've already kind of alluded to verse 14, you're going to see a dynamic shift, but I think this is very, very important when we understand Paul's journeys from this point forward. We've already seen that he's kind of established this MO, this way of doing things. And we start to see that there's some other things that are starting to come along, but then he runs into some different oppositions. And this is really going to shape this first missionary journey. Nobody had done this before. Paul's the first one, he's figuring a lot of stuff out. I'm not going to say everything he did was right, or everything he did was wrong, but he's figuring some stuff out. And I think this next section here is an eye-opener for Paul. It's an eye-opener for me. And so with those kind of thoughts implanted, how do you, how do you continue to pursue on and to think about those things? So, all right, with that, those questions for the folks online, you can be thinking about that, and then we'll look forward to joining with us next week.